We had a chanel function. That's the best answer.
Our audience of these presentations is usually fan high.
Where is he?
We usually get a few that join us. Just watching from the bar. He and me, you have to have that one up and we were together.
Good evening, is this working? I can say something else if it will help. We're in, all right, perfect. All right, well, welcome, good evening. It's a great March afternoon and wanna welcome Patty Kilmer and Liz Mazanaga, our principal and assistant principal at East Olympia Elementary. And we had a great opportunity this morning, Casey and I, to walk some, Director Taylor and I, to walk classrooms with Patty Kilmer around East Olympia. Had a fantastic times getting to know the students there and visiting a lot of fun activities going on at the school. And so, thank you for taking time to share about your school improvement plan with the board. And I will turn it over to you and your team and introduce everyone to, as we get started.
Okay. Can I pick this up?
Yeah, please.
So, we've put together a slide presentation. And in the presentation, we're just trying to give you a snapshot. So, there's just one little piece from each grade level. And I just want you to use your imagination and say, this is happening times six across, actually times seven, because we have each grade level and the specialist team and even the special ed team. The special ed team, I use that term lightly, there's one and a half people and one and a half lot people. And they join with a grade level at each PLC meeting. So, I'll just start walking you through this. So, and so what we're sharing is our pillars that match with the strategic plan. And one of the things that we think was important, is this gonna advance for me? Okay, so this is the start from Strong Start. And this is an example of what kindergarten used. And they've used something similar to this for a number of years for the introduction to walk kids. And they do their conferences prior to the start. And so, we use that as a springboard. And so, we have this kindergarten example. But then we kind of put it, expanded it and gathered a lot more information from all the parents all across the school when we implemented the Strong Start with every grade level. So, here you can see kindergarten. Rhonda Crawford was really instrumental across the district in brainstorming for all the elementary. And so, we just thought it was important to share some beliefs behind that. And then, they did a lot of brainstorming. And so, with their brainstorming, here are some things that were a result of the brainstorm that then all the grade levels used. But, 4th grade put a lot of time into this. And they felt it was really important to share. If you see at the bottom, they're sharing things about their curriculum as well. Not in a deep dive like a curriculum night, but they shared examples of what they were doing. So, the parents could see how they partner with the staff in projects and in learning and ways to ask questions. And what they ended up feeling like was the parents that I felt like I could call at any time, because I already had this relationship with the teacher. They're not gonna think I'm bugging them. You know, they're expecting at least, you know, a call every day from parents. And just sort of sending that message that we're here to answer your questions. I think, I don't know if these ladies are nodding if they got the same results. But, I do have a 1st grade teacher, a 3rd grade teacher and a specialist here with me. So, when we talked about doing the presentation, we said, it's not the Patty Kilmer Show and it's not the Patty Kilmer's SIP plan. And you always hear people say, well, the SIP plan should not be in a binder. Oh, I should have brought the binder, because I do really have one. But, sitting on a shelf. But, my binder just keeps getting bigger and bigger, because we keep putting in things as evidence from our PLC meetings where we're doing these short cycle goals. We have long range goals, short cycle goals. You may have heard that from every school. I don't know what you've heard, because I haven't been to all the school presentations. But Darby might be aware, because she's seen some of our short cycle goals in action and results of that. So, so the teachers were really advocating for having the Strong Start conferences. And then, that way, we stay strong all year long. So, whoops, I'm gonna go back, maybe. I think I went. So, I'm gonna turn this over to 1st grade. And they're gonna share a math goal, so.
I'm Colee Sproul, part of the 1st grade team at East Olympia. We just wanted to share the benefit of making short cycle goals. Also, the benefit of having collaborative time. So, this is just an example of our short cycle goal and how we collect our data. And then, this was just one measure. So, this is called a math timing that we give to the students weekly. And the goal is to have them at 10 facts. So, we complete 5 minute, minute fluency timings. And if you wanna go to the next slide, sorry. Then, when we get their data, when we correct those timings, the students also track their own data, so they know what timing they're on and they're working towards completing their train cars. And we have celebrations for that. And on the right is how we collect our data. So, we have all of their timings numbered out. The students with the C next to them are the students that were captured in the short cycle goal. And then, the stars next to them are students that were not necessarily in our short cycle goal, but that made the 10 math timing. So, just a lot of value in that.
So, when she says short cycle, we typically have ACT Day every week, but it's not their time every week. Some years it has been, this year it's 50%. So, they can set a math goal that would last four weeks. And then, another PLC would set a reading goal that would last for four weeks. And then, the other two weeks, we're doing PD, like equity. One piece we added was the Smart E goal, where we add an equity layer over a goal. Not if you know what I'm talking about, has this been shared with you? Okay, so, so to start with, we went back and looked at one of our short cycle goals and then did an equity overlay, so we could see, did we capture? And what was the equity piece? Are we looking at color? Are we looking at attendance? Are we looking at sociodynamic status? Are we looking at kids with discipline referrals? The team could decide that and then look at it to see like, and we had some great conversations about, you know, maybe there's something that I'm not, I'm subconsciously doing and not even aware of that I should be aware of. And so, just some light bulbs went on. It was kind of a fun, cool thing. So, and Colee is new to our building this year. And I'm just gonna say, her famous quote was, "I thought I was data-driven." And then, I came here and you guys are like data-driven on steroids. So, I just like repeating that, because she's just been a joy to work with. So, okay, next is 2nd grade, they did a short vowel, short vowel diagrams. Okay, and so, as a team, every grade level is a new team this year. Every grade level had at least one change. This team has been, this is the only goal that they did together. They've been doing things more independently. So, you can see where they targeted, each targeted so many kids. And then, after, at their post-test time, how did we do? Did we achieve the goal? And you can see, well, at the bottom, they didn't quite achieve it. And so, then it begs the question, well, what are we gonna do? Because we still want them to know those short vowel sounds, right? So, are we gonna extend it? Are we going to do some different intervention strategies? Because in the end, we still want the learning to happen. What's on the next one? No, oh, she's got, she's got two.
My name is Rebecca Andy. I'm here happy to represent 3rd grade for EOWE. We actually have three slides, so hang in. Now, our short cycle goal for reading was that we were particularly focusing on student reading fluency. We were hoping to bring up 57% of our students, from 21 out of 86 students to 47 out of 86 students, as measured by the DIBELS test. We are really particularly proud, because, could you go to the next slide, please? We actually, we attacked reading fluency in so many ways. We had walk to read groups, we have reading every day. We also paired very closely with our families. We trained them in tracking the reading fluency of their students. And then, we sent home reading fluency stories every single week for weeks and weeks. And thanks to the wonderful help of our families and the immense work of our students, we were able to bring up 59 of 86 students and bring it up to 69% instead of 57.
And that's great.
Our equity focus was particularly that we have far fewer boys in the 3rd grade, to the point that most of us at EOWE have about five boys in our class compared to nearly 20 girls. It's a very interesting bunch. So, we were tracking our boys to make sure that they didn't fall behind or get kind of lost amongst the rest of the data. And as you can see, we had really massive growth. Some of our boys who are not meeting standard, or one of our boys did move up. But, that's interesting, because what we saw was sort of this rightward shift. And we ended up having quite a few students not only meet their goal, but the ones that didn't had massive, massive growth. And some of them, by this point, are on goal.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Erin Novak. I am the Spanish specialist at East Olympia Elementary. And along with that, I'm also responsible for outreach for our Spanish-speaking families and making sure they're getting translated newsletters. And they also have my personal cellphone number. So, if something comes home in an email that they don't understand, they can text me personally and make sure that they are included. So, Jane Rizica, 5th grade teacher, brought this opportunity to our attention, the National Youth Leadership Pathways to STEM Forum, which takes place this summer around the country. Great opportunity for tons of students. And I'm gonna share a short video with you. And then, we're gonna talk a little bit more about this. Oh, and I wanna start with this. Hold on, let me preface this really quick. I wanna start with this, because Mrs. Rizica, Jane Rizica, when she brought this to, and Liz as well, Liz Mazanaga, to our attention, this opportunity. And we see so often that enrichment opportunities are available to our students, middle-class, upper-middle-class white students. And we were talking about a couple of our students raised by grandparents, Spanish-speaking parents born in Mexico. And just that they are as capable as their white classmates, but they do not garner the same opportunities because of those classifications. So, looking to nominate students who otherwise may not have that opportunity. So, I wanna share this with you, because we have not one, but two students who will be attending the STEM Forum in Seattle, Washington this summer. And I sat down with those two students to write thank-yous for our over 20 donors, which include both Dr. Dotson and Sean Batstone, who were integral in this process, along with Brian Hardcastle. And I was so moved, because I asked our student, what is something that you're really looking forward to about this opportunity? And this student, I have permissioned it from his mom to share about him. And Eker said something to me that floored me, because I thought he would talk about himself. I'm gonna have this great opportunity. This is gonna help me get scholarships or jobs. This is gonna open doors for me. And I want you to listen to what he said, because after he said it to me, we're just sitting there writing thank-yous to the donors. And after he said it, I said, "I'm gonna ask you the same question again and can you say the same thing exactly to me that you just said?" And he said, "Okay, and I'm gonna have you watch it and it's gonna move you and then we're gonna talk a little bit more about it, so get excited."
Oh, no, can we not? Is it muted? Yes, turn it, use the speakers. Or put a microphone up next to the computer.
I also have it on myself, although I don't know that the mouth would match.
In here, I think it's just running through the mixer panel. This is the new part to it, so we're learning the new system.
No worries.
We'll get it.
Right after the election? Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Well, and it's incredible, because the 23 families that I work with at EOWE during the shutdown, I, all teachers were reaching out to their students to make sure they had their needs met. And I remember Darby specifically, you and I were emailing about this, right? And that there were several families that I was texting them, you know, "Do you have enough food? Do you have the resources you need?" And when I would tell them, if they would say, "No, we're short on these supplies. We need toothpaste, we need this, we need that." And then, mom would say to me, "Can you text me exactly when you're showing up? So, I know it's you, so I can open the door for you." And it was a really educational, eye-opening, moving experience for me, because if someone knocks on my door, if it's not super late at night, I'm not worried about opening it. And I don't worry that someone's gonna take my children away from me. And I asked one of the moms about it. And she said, "I wanna make sure it's someone that's not gonna take my kids from me." And we have so many students who carry a lot of weight on their shoulders, along with their parents. And it's, it's pretty, they're pretty incredible young people.
Can I ask a question real quick, Patty? And maybe you can help me out on this. I don't wanna steal any thunder you guys have. But can you, you told me a story about a teacher. And I'm gonna assume it's this one that went out and found a, tracked down a birth certificate in this situation. Can you talk about your Spanish specialist class, please, while we're waiting here? I don't wanna steal anything that's coming down the line, though.
Sure, okay. So, when Patty and Liz and John Bash and I, we sat down and talked about what were the goals of the program. And goal, of course, is for students to learn vocabulary, to be introduced to some of the structures of the Spanish language. And then, second to that, is for students to learn about the culture. And so, just for example, I taught in an elementary school in Spain. And so, this last month, the students have spent the last five weeks visiting other countries each week. And when we visited Spain, we talked about how, when I first met my students in Spain, when I meet kiddos here, they'll shake my hand. And when I met my students in Spain and I show them pictures of my students up on the screen and they, and they look a lot like they do, they're seven and eight years old. I said, "They kissed me on both cheeks." And they, and they says, "That's gross." And I say, "Uh-uh, it's not gross. It's not bad and it's not weird. It's new, it's different and it's exciting." And we talk about, if you lived in Japan, I would bow to you. If you lived in New Zealand, we would touch foreheads. If I live in Spain, we kiss on both cheeks. If I live in the US, we shake hands. None of those things are bad and none of those things are the only way. They are one way. And one student, a 3rd grader, her name's Charlie, she, in Mrs. Andy's class, she raised her hand and she said, "I just realized at the end of class, if I had been born in Spain, I would think having dinner at 9 o'clock at night and kissing on both cheeks was normal. And I would think having dinner at 5 or 6 and shaking hands was weird, but it's because I was born here." And I said, "Charlie, that's why I do what I do." It's not the only way. Your way is not the only way. It's one way and your way is great, but there's lots of other ways that are great. There are so many other ways that are great and that's what I want you to know. And then, we studied the Dominican Republic and Venezuela and Guatemala. And those are four places I've spent extensive amount of time. And they looked at pictures of the kids I worked with in the orphanage in the Dominican Republic. They grow connections to them. They wanna go and dig up Larimar from the mountain in the Dominican Republic. And they, they become so attached to these different places and they realize that people are all people. And we talk about similarities. Like, in all of these places, people love to celebrate holidays with their families. Family is important and food is important. And you and your next-door neighbor can have similarities and differences. And you and somebody in another state can have similarities and differences. And you and someone on the other side of the world can have more in common than you and the person sitting next to you. And that is what changes adults, is when they're children and they start to experience the idea that my way is one way. And it's, it's so incredible to see. So, with the Spanish program, yes, the language, yes, learning vocabulary is great. But, learning about cultural similarities and differences and exploring them and the ideas behind tradition and the value and how belonging to something matters. And then, lastly, the other thing we talked about with Patty and Liz and John Bash was highlighting our students who are Spanish speakers. So, at our first fiesta, I know Sean Batstone was there for that. We had a table with a mom who doesn't speak English, but she was making piñatas with students, because that was a tradition her family does at Christmas time. And with 10 EOWE students, they handmade piñatas. And this is a mom who normally doesn't get to volunteer. She doesn't speak English. But that night, only 10 students got to do it and she was the star of the show. And this next fiesta, I'm looking out, because we're gonna have it June 2nd, so mark your calendars, because it's gonna be fun. And we're looking for a different parent to come and have a chance to be the spotlight. And it's amazing, too, because the kids feel so proud. And that is what I love, because when they all come in and I say, and then, my student, who's parents only speak Spanish at home, she, "You gotta get a paper and everybody needs to sit down in their seat." And all the rest of the day, they are looking at everyone else, trying to figure out what to do. But when they walk in my classroom, they are the superstars in there. And it's incredible to see that shift in their body language. And I think it's probably, I would say, you guys, too, our favorite part of the program. When you come in and you see the kiddos in there, so proud. And so, Eker was in the program for two years and he was a student like that. And his older sister was in my 2nd grade class before, when I taught 2nd grade at EOWE. And I met him when he was four or five. So, he's super special. His parents were born in Mexico, his older siblings were born in Mexico and he and younger sister were born here. And the parents are just some of the kindest, most hard-working people you can meet. And he's gonna, he's gonna share with you why it is that he is so excited to go to this experience this summer. So, I just, close one more thing. So, I just, I wanna note, obviously, you heard him saying, it was kinda hard to hear. He wants to have this opportunity, so his dad can retire, because he's very aware that opportunities like this lead to more opportunities, to scholarships, to going to college, to making a living that can help support your family when you see your parents working through minimum wage jobs. And I think that Jane Rizica does such a great job, our 5th grade teacher, of finding these opportunities and pointing them out to all of us, so that we're all keeping our eyes open. And then, I'm so grateful, the day that Liz and I called and that Sean, that you made time to talk with us and Brian Hardcastle, and we raised $3,375.
So, I am gonna interrupt.
Oh, go for it.
Erin Novak, who does not get mad, ever, comes into my office, arms crossed and said, "I am so upset." I said, "Okay, what's going on?" Well, they said that we could get up to 30% scholarship.
30 to 40%.
30 to 40% scholarship for this student. She helped Eker sit and write an essay to get it. Parents called, said, "Well, we gotta prove for a scholarship of $250."
Out of $2,595.
And she said, "I'm starting to GoFundMe? Do I have permission? I just, I can't." And I said, "Let's slow down, let's, let's send an email, let's see what we can do." And she looks at me and she said, "Well, can we call instead? Because I'm a lot more convincing over the phone." And I said, "Sure." So, we picked up and we called Batstone and Hardcastle and.
And bless you for making time for me that day, because I really would have been over here if you'd said no.
Yeah.
So, it's so exciting, when I called the company and I said, "This is so frustrating, because I'm not, I don't think it should be free. I totally understand that, but make it at least attainable for a student, because we know that kiddos who can pay for this, it just leads to more and more opportunities. And these two kiddos are just as capable. But what stands up standing in their way is the lack of opportunity. And then, the gap just continues to widen. And so, the lady said, "Yes, we are working on this. I will report all of your notes to the powers that be." And I'm just thrilled that they're both going. And also, that the, that the other kids there will see, especially Eker, that they will see that he has a seat at the table.
So, I think five kids were nominated and then two were selected by this company. And then, we managed to raise enough funds for them to be able to go. And I just have to say, I don't know if this is being recorded for TV or whatnot, but it was just too cute, because Eker has never been away from home before. And he said, "Well, at least I'll know somebody there, maybe we can just share the room." And she said, "I don't think that would be a problem." But bless his heart, right? I mean, that's just out of the mouths of babes. He just like, is so excited to go and just, "You know me, you know where I come from. I'm okay to be here."
Yeah, and it feels like all of Tumwater was behind them both to go. You know, that's, to have more than 20 donors is really, really significant. So, very exciting update. Oh, sure. I haven't looked at it.
So, this kinda goes back to what Erin was talking about, of different ways of doing things and different ways of learning. And Jane Rizica has noticed that amongst the 5th grade class this year, we have so many artists. It's amazing and they're good. And so, she's really started teaching them how to take notes, which is a skill I didn't learn until college. And these are just some examples of some sketches that she has been doing with her kids and just.
She's being research-based, that, so John Hattie has several books on visible learning. And then, this visual note-taking says that kids will retain it much better than just copying. this visual note taking says that kids will retain it much better than just copying out, you know, letters from the alphabet, right? So for them to attach the learning to a visible visual cue in their head. So her, her examples were just so good. We wanted to share with you.
So this is an example of a science lesson that she did. And then here are some more. And the kid, she's making a class notebook for all her students just because they've really gravitated towards this type of note taking. Rounding decimals. Some ELA.
Can I be terrible and interrupt?
No.
That last slide. I actually paired with Jane on the class book project. We both have completed class books. They went to the printer today, actually. And what we had is students each create two to five pages and publish this book. And so we chose different topics. Hers was This Is Us and it's this expressive, this is who I am and what's inside me. My book was actually one of our English language learning opportunities in my class. We do verses and songs and and so the students use their best handwriting and their favorite verses. And then they went and found verses, songs and jokes for us. So this is a real pride piece for the students and is driving so much in their writing and in their art, but also in literacy and excitement to access books as well.
So this is our morning ukulele class. We have a former East Oley teacher who retired many years ago. And she is in the Association of University Women Group down in the Portland Vancouver area. And they were talking about their legacy and how they might support women coming up, wanting to go to school or whatnot. And she went, now have this whole different thing. That she said, the thing that meant the most to me in my life was when I was teaching music for like 20 years at East Olympia. And she would put on plays and, you know, rent the script and partner with PTO. And it was always hard to get funds to rent the script and get the costumes and yada, yada. So she and her husband did an endowment fund for East Olympia Music. And I mean, it's a crazy large amount. And we are allowed to use like a thousand dollars a year from the fund. And there's specific things we can and can't use it for in order for it to be sustained. And so it was hard to do anything during COVID. So we wanted to kind of make up for it. And she said, you might not do something one year if you want to bankroll it for the next. So we bought 20 ukuleles. And our librarian teaches a morning, Wednesday morning ukulele class. And he started by offering it to fifth grade. So we had 25th graders, then 24th graders, then 23rd graders. And Rebecca's class, they all wanted to do it. So we're doing 23rd graders plus all of Rebecca's class because she's willing to partner and we have a time. And so they come in on Wednesday mornings, we're teaching them, you know, six or seven chords. And eventually they leave able to play a song or two. And so that was, I mean, it's just a cool thing that we did that is hopefully going to be sustained. But as a thanks to Jill Weir and her husband Mike, that they gifted us this opportunity. And after having not had a chance to do something with it, it's fun to be able to do something that we leave the ukuleles up in the library and I have a couple in my office because sometimes kids come and practice. Some of us bought our own ukuleles so that we can just go and join the group. You know, and it's small and it, it just begs the question, what, what are those? And can I do that? And it's like, yeah. We'll see if we can get you into that class.
Can I interrupt one more time?
Yeah.
We're using this for science instruction because we go through the first lesson and show students, okay, sound is motion. Sound is energy. Wait a minute, if sound is energy, and then we start transferring it into all of these different things that drive right into our root standards. So the vast majority of students, admittedly all of mine, can tell you a great deal about not only like the ukulele itself, and they can play two songs, but we also have the science connection as well.
All right. Now I wanted to share the growth of EOE this year. So we were projected and staffed at 462. And as you can see, September, we started at 518, went up to 519, 522, our numbers just kept going up. And when I started the school year this year, I was point five East Olympia, point five Tumwater Hill. And luckily Sean heard our cry and saw the growth that kept happening. And both of them got together and moved me over right around November to East Oley full time. And as you can see, we continue to grow. Every week we are enrolling new students. And what's unique about what's happening at East Oley is we aren't unenrolling students. Where other schools, they unenroll and enroll and they kind of fluctuate, but we just keep growing and growing. So everything that we just talked about and saw, we are doing this. Our teachers are doing this with new kids coming and joining in and having to acclimate them. Every week we're giving new kids. Our, our office staff is having to enroll new kids every week. And it's just amazing to see how the teachers just welcome these students in. And it's some, we had a new kid start the other day and I was like, oh, what's your name? And it was their first day and they were just acting like they've been there all year just because everybody just welcomes them. But this is a trend that is happening right now. We have 45 more homes opening in one neighborhood and then another section of the preserve opening. So our numbers are just going to continue to grow. And then I wanted to end with this. I know Sean loves the numbers. By the numbers of the, my first number is 89. Any guesses?
How many ukuleles you purchased?
Good guess. This is as of March 14th, the number of unfilled certificated staff positions we've had this year. I know that every board meeting, we're talking about our sub shortage. So nobody, yeah.
Like 89 teachers missing? No, substitute, substitutes not coming in. Okay.
Yes. So with that number, we are having to swap specialists in. Novak has come in so many mornings early to help cover our counselors stepping in. Our team at East Oley is really stepping up. This number would be higher if we didn't have our mercy, our emergency certificated staff. But I know that we've talked about the sub shortage and I hadn't seen the number yet. So I asked Edith to pull and I was surprised to see it. 227. That's the number of unfilled classified staff. So para positions that haven't been filled in our building this year. And so that is our recess coverage. That's our small group. Those are again holes that we are having to fill throughout the day and still make these amazing growth for our students and have them not feel it. And we're doing it, but it's hard and it's a lot for our teachers to ask. And then I wanted to end with this one. 28. Do you guys have a guess what 28 is? That's how many years Patty Kilmer has been the principal of East Olympia. And 28 years is a lot. And I know last board meeting, you saw that she is retiring. And so I want to take a minute to celebrate her. So Edith, if you all know Edith, Edith is very, she is like a vault of information. She knows everything. And I asked her, I said, hey, Edith, can you write down just a few things? And so I've got pages, but I'm only going to highlight a few. So throughout Patty's 28 years, she has won numerous awards for the building. The School of Distinction, a Washington Achievement Award, three different times. National School Change Award, which is pretty big. She has implemented or piloted different programs. She implemented or piloted the all day kindergarten program back in 2002. She's had multiple special programs in the building. She has done a schoolwide construction, which was long, yep, remodel. And two rich road constructions, which is always fun. She has celebrated the 100th anniversary of East Olympia being open. A rededication ceremony after the remodel. I've heard stories of helicopters coming to our field to give students rides. And my first year at East Olympia, we were celebrating that we made it through the school year. And we're sitting there and all of a sudden we see a helicopter and Patty goes, oh, I bet I know who's flying that. Let's go see, let's go see if we get a helicopter ride. So my first year here, last day of school, Patty and I went up on a helicopter. Just out of whim. We don't do those helicopter rides anymore. Yep. She has done 28, I'm guessing, senior grad walks. Okay. So she's done many senior grad walks. She has started many events that I think will last the whole time East Oley is open. Grandparents lunch, harvest parties, fun run. The spring barbecue, the talent show, Missoula Children's Theater, the art auction, Limeberry Nights, Spanish Fiesta. And I think the list can go on and on. And I'm, Edith put this together. This is just like a 10 minute list of Edith. But I think that there's a lot to celebrate and a lot of people are going to miss you. And there's some very big shoes to fill.
So none of those things happen without the whole team. It's like the whole team, you know, you, if you don't have people behind you, nothing happens. So it's getting everybody on board. And we come up with a plan and we do it together. That's, that's the way we roll. But that's what I want to end us with. So thank you.
I'll just jump in really quickly. Is that okay, President Taylor?
You bet. Go ahead.
I just was, I, I, your presentation was incredible. And I did want to extend my apologies. I'm sure Sean did already this morning, but I had planned to be there this morning, but I sadly, my boss used me instead of herself for a meeting today. So that, that's what happens and it's okay. But I did want to just extend my incredible gratitude to you, Patty, for all the years that you've been at East Oley. I'm newer to Tumwater, but your legends certainly precede you. And it's with great leaders like yourself that have built the, the reputation and the community of Tumwater. And you'll be extremely missed. And it's evident here from your staff, just how missed you will be. Thank you so much for everything.
I'm going to jump in real quick. I had a great visit. It was, it was very cool. I was extremely moved by the Spanish specialist part of that. I would love to hear, and I'm glad you told the story about the Spanish speaking kids being kind of the champions of the classroom and leading the way. You forgot to mention a part about the math scores where so because of the.
So we did, we did find that once we started the program, the Spanish speaking students, their math scores jumped. Actually that year collected the data and you asked if I had it. I don't have fresh data right now, but we did. And the only thing we could really, there was no correlation coefficient, just trying to figure out that you know, how they felt about themselves and that they could speak out more and, and ask questions more freely in class, maybe gave them that confidence to do it. That's our hypothesis. We didn't, you know, obviously go into any scientific research, but we liked it. We liked that their scores went up.
And all that matters, really.
Yeah.
If we can link it, we'll just take the scores. That's okay. The other thing I noticed at every single level, everywhere is the reading in the focus on reading. I think it was in every room, Sean. I'm not sure. But they were doing reading and if they weren't doing reading, they were back, they were doing math. So I was really amazed of some of the tools and techniques that are being used with the fingers and the to be writing in fourth grade when I did it is way different than now. And I can see why they're improving in the writing because they really connect. The, the thing that jumped out and Patty showed me was that they write a story and they have to incorporate certain elements or pieces or topics. And then they have to highlight those in their writing and then cross reference them back to a separate log sheet essentially for types of. Jump in here, Patty.
He's referring to robust vocabulary words and transition words in the paragraphs so that it leads the reader through so that there's a flow.
And they turn out to be better writers instead of maybe writing the same sentence, the same ways, just a little bit differently. So yes. And that was truly amazing to see. Your PTO, PTA fundraising, can you hit that real quick and talk about the two?
So we did a readathon and a couple of other schools in the district had done it. We have also in the past done a jogathon, but just with the COVID and the timing, we thought, let's try this readathon. And we set a goal of $45,000 over a two week period. And each. She's an ace there. I thought we were going to get it all along. I would get on the intercom in the morning and say, yeah, we made this goal, but I don't know if we're going to make the next one. And there was a fourth grade boy who, if whoever was the highest fundraiser gets to be principal for a day. And he was sitting at number one for a long time. And I'd go in every day and say, I see you. You want my job, buddy. You're out for my job. And he didn't win. And a kindergartner came in at the last minute, swooped in. And so we went into the classroom and said, you know what? Buddy, you came in second place. How about being assistant principal for the day? He was so excited. His mom's excited. So tomorrow he's going to be assistant principal for the day. My, my student is absent tomorrow, so they'll be principal of the day on Monday. So we'll, we'll figure that. But, but they gained, made $45,000. What you saw today, I think the PTO was out there kind of doing this mandala out by our flagpole. And all the classes were invited to come out and color in a section. And then I think tonight they're lifting off the tape so it will reveal it. We're just trying to find somebody with a drone who can take a picture of it because it's really cool. Yeah. So that was one of the things. And then tomorrow they get to silly string, Liz and I, as a result of that. And I think I did ask and about, someone asked like, how much profit do you get from that? And it's a sliding scale depending on what you raise. If you raise this, they, the company keeps a certain, what percent? And, but I think.
Seventy-five percent.
I think she said, we keep 75% of that. So, yeah.
No. So great stuff there for sure. And the other, you talked about new kid environment. I couldn't imagine being a better school and to be a new kid. My good, they have some great systems in place that would make a kid feel welcome, probably by the end of the first day, I would imagine. So, right. And then the last thing, or well, Mr. Fielder's class, that was great. Principal Kilmer asked the fifth graders, and I think she was maybe asking like, what can we do to help you prepare for junior high, maybe? Or what were you, what were you looking from the school?
I asked them what they wanted, what was one thing they wanted to have happen before they leave. And usually it's like some fun activity or something.
But they went right into, yes. And wow, some creative ideas. So yeah, it sounds like Mr. Fielder is going to be.
They want to see Mr. Fielder run the track, wearing a wig. I can make that happen. Yeah.
So I will come back for that. And then the last thing that you talked about that I just wanted to highlight as well too, is that, and Sean's mentioned it, is the reason why we acknowledge every retired teachers in January, or maybe it's even February.
It's this week.
I'm sorry. It's March. Yes, I'm sorry. Because of that significant endowment that you talked about, and Patty told me the amount, I won't repeat it, but it is significant for sure. And that is, that was really cool to see as well, because those ukuleles is the same way. Like, I want to do that. So.
We also saw when you retired teachers, they're volunteering.
And we did, that is.
Yeah. Sue Sugarbaker was there in person and I want to just give her a shout out that she has been zooming with kids one-on-one, doing reading tutoring. She didn't retire from East Olympia or Tumwater, but she's friends with.
She's my next door neighbor. She moved in. She found out I was a second grade teacher. And she came and I was pregnant that year. And when I went on maternity leave, she talked to my sub and said, I'd like to stay. Just worked her way through the room. She's phenomenal. She's always buying things. And when we did gingerbread houses and there were students that didn't have a grown up, this was four years ago, that didn't have a grown up that could come in. She was there and, you know, just.
She'll be a surrogate grandparent for grandparents' day if a student doesn't have one. So yeah, we have a good little grandma crew, but she's also a retired teacher.
So yes, they are doing awesome, great stuff out there. And could you just make sure you invite the board to that June 2nd event?
Yes. I'll send you all an email.
I know we will all want to be there for sure. I don't know if we'll all necessarily get to be there, but yeah. I know we will all want to be there for sure. I don't know if we'll all necessarily get to be there, but yeah. It's my son's birthday. Scott might not be there.
Can I go next? I love going to East Oley. The last time I was out there was looking at the doors that were decorated before the holiday break. And that was a lot of fun. And I remember, and the thing that sticks with me and I talked about at the next board meeting, were that the kids were not voting for their own doors. They were voting for other people's tours. It was, it was, the focus was on kindness. So you guys are living, you know, and, and the kids are living, you know, what you believe. I just wanted to mention that my boss is still a chemist Kathy Waite, who got her first teaching job from the Ms. Patty Kilmer. So she put Kathy on a great trajectory. So I just wanted to mention, you have a lot of impact on students, but clearly you also have a lot of impact on staff. And it's something that a lot of educators don't think about is their impact on other adults and how the adults will go out into the world and have a bigger impact. And so I just want to, one person, you know, Kathy Waite, who's having a huge impact on a whole school district and you gave her her start. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
So I assume that there will be another opportunity to honor your retirement. Not being prepared to go through everything that I would need to go through. Seeing as how my children went through East Olympia. But I will share one short story because it relates to the phenomenal work that you all do. So I thank the absolute world of all of you. Is Novak was my, one of my son's teachers. So my older son Jacob is kind of going back to the growth and in thinking about all of the awards that the school has earned under Patty's leadership. When he was a fourth grader, he was one of the students in the school that had the highest math growth on his smarter balance. And so Principal Kilmer had asked if he wanted to join her and Superintendent and Assistant Principal Hadeen, him and one of his good friends to go to the event with Superintendent Reitdahl, you know, to receive the award for East Olympia, you know, having the highest math growth. And so that was a really great experience for him. And he still will say, when you ask him about that now, that the best part was getting Kentucky Fried Chicken on the way home.
We'll take you anywhere you want for lunch. I really like Kentucky Fried Chicken. Okay, done. Make your day.
Anything else? I don't have any questions. Just thank you very much. Thoroughly impressed by your presentation and the work you're doing. Thoroughly impressed.
Well, thank you. And I just, I want to thank my people because like I said, this isn't done in a silo. And I could have said all these things, but I think it's way more powerful because this is passion. This is passion for what we do. And that we get excited about it every single day. And like, you know, a kid makes a little bit of growth and it's like, come on, read to me. You know, it's, it's like, they need to know that, that we're rooting for them. We think they can do it. And when you have people who kind of like think like that and make it happen, it just, it makes it. And so, you know, we're trying to wrap everything in and make everything connected. So there's meaning to our work. But in the end, we're serving our clients and inviting the parents to be a true part of that team and having our doors open and answering questions as best we can. If we don't know the answer, we'll find somebody who does and we'll get things figured out. So thank, thank you for your time and your questions and thank you all for coming. Love you.
Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and take 10 minutes. All right. I call it to order. Yes. There is a feedback. One moment. Check. Hello, hello. Are we ready?
I think we're set.
I would like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the Tumwater School District sits on the ancestral lands of the Nisqually Squawson Island and Chehalis people. I thank these caretakers of the land who have lived on and continue to live on the land since time immemorial. Please rise as I lead us in the flag salute. Thank you. We'll now move on to our action item. Superintendent Dawson?
Yes, good evening, President Taylor and board members. I am sharing this one on behalf of Beth Schooler, our human resources director tonight, that we have one item on the agenda and that is ratification of public school employees tentative agreement. They have come to an agreement on a contract. You have a memo in your packet that identifies some of the terms of that agreement. It is within the parameters that we had identified earlier. And the teams work very hard together to come to something that we feel like can, we can move forward with this year that recognizes our fiscal limitations and also, also tries to continue to, to honor our employees in a positive way. And we'll keep, and so you can look through those terms. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We would recommend to the board approval of this contract and thank the bargaining teams from both the association and the district for their hard work together.
Any questions for Superintendent Dawson? I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the PSC 2122 contract.
All second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? The approval of the contract's passed. We will now adjourn our special meeting. We'll move into our work session.
Yes, very good. Well, to begin with, I want to just say we have a few items on our agenda. It's slightly modified. You'll see, we'll discuss where we are in terms of revenue and expenditure projections there. But before that, our first discussion this evening is we are thankful to have a team from Port of Olympia, Sam Gibbene, Executive Director. And, and they're going to share with us a little bit about the project that's going on or that there, that is in planning phases at this stage on the Port of Olympia property near Bush Middle School. And we particularly wanted to focus just on impacts to the school and, and work that's being done around mitigating those impacts. And so Sam, sorry, I'll, I'll turn over to you to open that discussion.
Great, thank you. I am Sam Gibbene, the Executive Director of the Port of Olympia. And if you will recall, we've been here before talking about the option that we have on about 200 acres in the New Market area. Is that better? Yeah. Okay, great. We, we do have a lease option on approximately 200 acres of, in our New Market area, which is just north of the Bush Middle School. We are proceeding with a couple of new developments or at least our developer, the partner that is looking to actually lease the land is. So it is not for the entirety of the, the two acre, 200 acres. And I'm going to turn the floor over here in just a moment to talk to Mr. Alan Rowe, who is our business development and real estate manager. Do you want to say that, you know, we work closely? We've been in contact with the superintendent and your facilities director. And we're really know that we understand the issues, your concerns about traffic in the area. And so as we look to develop this, we definitely want to make sure that traffic is being directed to the north and additional traffic to any of the new buildings will not be going by the middle school. And, and then looking to provide some tree retention and buffering area in between the development in the school as well. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Mr. Alan Rowe.
Yes. Have you guys seen the site plans for the development? Okay, so as you're aware, we have two projects being proposed right now with our developer, Panatoni, through the city of Tumwater. And one of the projects is for a building of approximately around 450,000 square feet. And that's directly east of your bus facility, correct, right in there. And then there's been more recently proposed a smaller project consisting of two buildings between the middle school and International Wood Products, we refer to as IWP, in there, one building of approximately 200,000 square feet and one building of 150,000 square feet. And then one of the things about these two projects is for these buildings, they actually do exit with a driveway going west to Kimmy Street. And I can admit, when we first saw that, you know, our initial comment was we could accept this with right turns only on exit with trucks going to the north. And we've communicated this through our public process as far as, you know, we don't want to see trucks going to the south. Our developer doesn't want to see trucks going to the south. And obviously the community and the school district doesn't want to see trucks going to the south. So that was our, our feedback. The status on these two projects right now, and if Mike Matlock's available on the phone, he can comment even further through the city process. But for what we know, the larger building, the one that's east of the, the school, that exits out onto Center Street, that's going through the DRC feasibility process through the city. And it's, it's been through about three or four meetings initially for that and still receiving comments back from the city to clarify some items. The other two buildings are very preliminary and have some feedback as far as feasibility where it's, where potentially even uncertain. So we haven't received feedback from the city where those projects could move forward in the permitting process. As Sam alluded to also, I, one of the things you'll notice when you see the site plan is we were conscious of trying to leave at least 150 feet of tree buffer around the middle school. We've got not just the middle school there, but also Tumwater wellheads are in that areas as well. And then there is no access to 83rd Street or 83rd Avenue. So there's a, there's emergency only in the event of a emergency response or fire driveway, but there's no open access off of 83rd Avenue. So 100% of the traffic will only be coming from Kimmy Street. And then that we're supporting an action where it could only go north. We are a little bit limited, I'll admit, as far as, you know, what the port can directly do here when it comes to truck traffic. We have communicated with the city that, you know, we would be supportive of any efforts that they could do through their toolbox of making sure that we do limit any sort of truck traffic trying to go south down to 93rd.
So can you take a look at the map and walk through the traffic flow on Center Street then? And how that would come in and out to that building you were just describing?
Yeah, so the, let's just call it Project One, which is a larger 450,000 square foot building. That will be the project that will have access off of Center Street only. And they will have a driveway entrance just to the south of Mission Glass, which is the larger building to the north there, correct? So right about where the pointer is there, there'll be a driveway entering in to the facility from that point. One of the challenges that we've had and the reason why these projects are located along with the timing of these projects is Panatoni does have an auction area for 200 acres in here. They've had the gopher survey done on the entire 200 acres. And at this point, this is the only area that's uninhabited by the gophers. So not only is it impacting the location of the buildings, but also, you know, I think if you look at the two site plans combined, the first question I had is why aren't they just simply interconnected? And, and the driveways, you know, being shared between the two facilities? We can't do it because just east of 80th Avenue, along with just east of your bus facility there, we have a retention pond that serves your bus facility. And it's, it's just a habitat area that the gophers do enjoy. And so when the survey came back, there was presence of the gophers, which currently based off of the HCP status, the Habitat Conservation Plan, we can't provide any connection or disturb that area at this point. So.
So that, so just to make sure I'm clear, so that area east of the bus facility is where the Project One would, and there would be a driveway out to Center Street and trucks may not turn right to go down south on Center Street?
Correct. We will, we will support that. I will say the, the emphasis as far as right turn only, which is also shared on Center Street, but absolutely sure on Kimmy being the, the close vicinity of the school. So the port, the port actually took a stance on that one of saying, we want to see this revised and make sure that there's a right turn on an exit. So basically forcing trucks to go to the north. And then with Center Street, Center Street is a city-owned street. Kimmy is a port-owned street. So there, we're just again voicing our support with whatever the city can do to ensure trucks don't go to the south.
Okay, that's a, I mean, that is a major concern because 83rd and Center is a very significant throughway for people driving to the school. That's one of the main ways in which people get down there. So it's already a pretty terrifying intersection that has seen several accidents. And so to have trucks even accidentally end up in that area, I'm actually having a hard time picturing how that would even work. So.
Yeah, we, we, we absolutely share the same concern. And I think it's whatever we can do within our authority, along with whatever support we can give the city as well to do that. By, by no means do we want to see truck traffic going down in that direction.
Got a quick, I don't have a quick question. I have a question. Kind of what Darby was saying about that Site One, I guess we're calling it. And you said that's going to exit out to Center Street? Is that correct?
Correct.
And then we want to do the right turn only, but that's going to be a left turn for those trucks.
For that one there, it would be a left turn.
So here's my concern, and it's kind of what Darby just mentioned about 83rd as well, that not only, yeah, that intersection for people gaining bush is one thing. It's also the, you know, Tumwater High School's right just up a little bit. And anybody accessing the high school on the south side of it is, uses Center Street in this area. I guess they could. I guess they could use Litter Rock or 99, but in this area, they would still do that. I'm worried about maybe people heading north on Center Street at certain times and those trucks turning out left. That's my concern. Now you said that is a city street?
It's a city on street.
So you guys probably can't, now maybe stepping on my zone here, but are you allowed to make any signal changes or changes to that street? But on Kimmy or on, on Kimmy you are, that's yours?
Or Kimmy's the port on.
You maybe have more.
Straight, yeah, we've got, we've got a little bit more in there as far as.
So if we, so.
Developer.
So if we as the board are maybe concerned about, and maybe it's just me, I don't know. But that would be a city issue then, maybe to look at how we are going to make those trucks go north and the impact to that traffic heading north on Center Street.
Correct.
Thank you.
It's just kind of following up on already happening discussion. But when you were discussing this, you said that you would be working with, and I think your phrase was, whatever they have in their toolbox to help. But don't you think it might be a wise idea to just have that plan in place to make sure you're enforcing that truck traffic to go the routes that you want to go? As opposed to just hoping on a women prayer that Department of Transportation can help you out or the city? Do you think it's wise to have that kind of mapped out? So everybody sees that this is going to happen this way? Because I mean, it's nice to talk about this in this terms and here in a city of Tumwater. But at the end of the day, people are tired. Those truck drivers are just going to get home whatever way they can. And they're not going to maybe follow the roads or the right route that you say that is going to happen. They're going to say, well, I just want to get home, so too bad. You have to think about this in a real world context, not just the graphs and the charts we're seeing. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely, we understand. I mean, that's what we say for them to do versus, you know, the truck driver that gets off at 93rd and refuels his truck and then pulls up the GPS and goes, okay, this is the way to go. So this has been a conversation with the city and the ports offered its full support, you know, within its box that it operates in for making sure that that doesn't happen. And, you know, if there's road restrictions that could be put in place or so forth, by all means, we support that.
And did we end up with Mr. Matlock on the, on the phone?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. He's there, but it sounds like he's coming through your speakers and not up onto the, onto the larger Zoom. Let me see if I can bring it up where we could hear him on here, although that's going to bring back the echo on Zoom. Unless we can, wow. That's a group. We have an infinite loop.
That's trippy.
And there it goes again. And that's all we got, so. This appears to be a technical issue with this. I'm wondering if we can get sound up for Mike so he can be heard.
I'm just thinking that he could speak to the issue of the development review that the city has. And it's really, and I know that parents in particular are not fond of like, well, that's not our box. That's not the port's box, that's the city's box. And they wanted to see some coordinated effort. And it really is like, we can't require as the port what happens within a city-owned right of way. So, but I think that Mr. Matlock can speak to what their process will be.
Sure, let me know if my audio is not coming in and I can wait until you can get it straightened out. Is that coming through okay now?
Yes, that seems to be working.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, good evening. Yeah, and we're on the same page with the city. We, it's our goal to get traffic to go north for all three of these buildings as well. And we can do that through a number of means. It can be design features of the intersections with the roadways. It can be signage, it can be permit conditions that the owner is aware about. And our past experience has been that in a combination of those types of moves will do pretty well. I can't promise that there will never be a truck go down to 83rd or go south. Those are public streets, but I'm pretty sure that we can at least significantly minimize that. And I think it would be the rogue truck that might go there every now and then.
All right, well, at this point, are there any other questions from the board? On this topic at this stage?
I just have a logistical comment, not a question. So as you head north on Kimmy, you're going to jog around and meet up with Center Street to where you come to a stop sign where the semi trucks are going to have to take a left-hand turn. There's no light there because the next light is the most logical access to get to I-5. I could, I mean, this isn't going to affect me in any way, but I can see a lot of trucks getting backed up there as they're trying to make that left-hand turn as traffic is increasing on Center Street going north and south.
Some of the preliminary comments we've had on the transportation analysis done by our developer and then reviewed by the city, along with just the city's understanding of the transportation issues there, both the interchange in that intersection at Tumwater Boulevard and Center is additional enhancements on the left turn. They've discussed a few either signaling options or additional turn pockets to go ahead and improve that, just because it has been on their radar even before this development project's been proposed.
It's like, I just, I mean, this, again, this is on the other side of the road. But I remember in the day when Ellen I was getting off work at five o'clock and even they would stagger their release times by 15 minutes and traffic would be backed up half a mile, just trying to make a right continuous lane turn. They had a dedicated lane and it would still be backing up for quite some ways. So that intersection can get pretty hectic at certain times of the day.
Yeah, and the port, the ports offered up property in that location as well. We've communicated with the city that if any properties needed to further enhance that intersection, we own, you know, three quarters are surrounding that intersection. All right, any other questions from the board? At this point, as we know, you know, the port and the city are the primary decision makers on this project. For us, it's a matter of continuing to make sure that we stay engaged to protect and mitigate impacts on the school. And thank you so much for coming to discuss that with us. And I know Mel will be staying connected, certainly all of us will. And we'll, if you have other feedback on that for us, please let me know.
Yes, happy to come back at any corner if you have additional questions or Sean knows where to reach us. And we definitely want to stay in good communication with you all so you know what the plans are and how they're moving along.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next topic? Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
Yes, thank you. So the, so the next topic this evening we had on agenda was our preliminary revenue and expenditure projections. And we're still in a little bit of a process on that. And Jennifer, I wonder if we can get you one of the mics if you want to just give an update on process and where we stand on that. So we can, as we're what I want to say, I just want to say, I want to send my thanks right off for our human resources and business office teams that are working incredibly hard on this and seeking to make sure we have information very early when a lot of other districts are still a ways out from starting to put together the kind of projections we're putting in place right now. And so appreciate that.
Okay, and recognizing that everybody is working hard, not just us. So the process that we're going through right now is I received the HR file. And what that means, I know you saw that in an email, but what that really means is HR has rolled over all of the staffing into the new system for the budget, for the new budget year. And so they have calculated all the new benefit rates. They've added the new IPD rate that the legislature had approved. And they made adjustments to staffing that either staffing that were eliminated from last year's budget or staffing that we have added this year that we know will be continuing next year. And then there's a process of going through that to validate for accuracy. And then we're doing a lot of reconciliations to make sure that those staffing numbers reconcile to our staffing assignments based on our preliminary enrollment projections. So we're validating every building and every department to make sure we have the right positions in there to make sure we're giving a good number, because that is about 85% of our budget is our HR file. So we spend a lot of time on that. And then we have our MSOCs. And what's difficult with our material supplies and operating costs is that we have been in COVID years and now we're going into a year that we think is like a pre-COVID year. We don't exactly know all of what all of that will look like. But we do know that there will be some adjustments that we need to make. So it's hard to do just a flat trend. An average of the last eight years, I tried to do and that didn't appear like it was giving us what we, what we need. So I'll talk to Melissa about what she's doing in Stillicum. So still working on some, some numbers there. And then on the revenue side, we have our main categories of our state apportionment funding, all of our categorical funding, grants, donations. And then we have our LEA, our local effort assistance and levy dollars that we will be collecting. So we're refining all of those numbers. The portion of the state apportionment is difficult at this point in time because we don't have, OSPI puts out a model that they call the F203. And we put in our enrollment numbers and some other data. And then they, they calculate what they believe our projection for next year of state apportionment will be. And that's about a, what, 50 to 100-page document of formulas? So we're just doing a very straightforward projection based on current apportionment, adding the five and a half percent IPD to the salaries that are state-funded and our MSOCs. And then adjusting our prototypical funding model that they adjusted for counselors and social workers and nurses and psychologists. So yes, Melissa. I'm sorry, Director Beard.
Are you, are we using just flat enroll? Are we just assuming this year's enrollment for next year is that what we're doing?
For our preliminary projections, we are just considering a flat enrollment. And Sean presented those numbers at a board meeting, the last meeting, I believe it was. It was a little below flat enrollment, but we are still refining those. So as we get more information, I've been talking to Mel about building in the area and where we might see some increases. So we are still refining some of those numbers.
Yeah, I don't mind if we just keep it as flat enrollment. I don't think we're undercutting, I don't think it's a game that we're, I don't think we're playing a game if we just assume flat enrollment, so.
Oh, absolutely not. And I talked to other districts that are doing something very similar. Yeah, that they're, everybody's nervous about increasing enrollment at this point, going into post-COVID and still not knowing what, that there might be some decisions made that impact enrollment for next year. And then we, on the revenue side, we also know that there will be some post-COVID adjustments. We are making the assumption at this point that students that will be paying for meals for next year, unlike the past couple of years. And we do know that we'll be opening our facilities for facility rental. I mean, we'll get rental fees for facility use and some things.
I'm sorry, just real quick questions should you wrap this up? And I've been actually wondering about that, the whole rental to the facility. What part of the income or revenue is that, is that, is it big? I didn't think it was very big, but.
Oh, you're going to put me on the spot, Lori?
I'm sorry.
I want to say over $100,000. It's not chump change, but it's not, I mean, out of $100 million budget, it's, it's small, yeah.
We also then have costs, of course, for providing, one of our biggest challenges right now is with the staffing shortages that we're facing. We're having those discussions about what our custodial team can actually support in terms of that. And so as we're moving that up, we're trying to do that alignment with what we actually have the staff to support. Because, you know, that certainly is overtime for every one of those jobs that they have to come in and, and be there to help, particularly on weekends. And.
Right.
And it turns out the people we rent to are not the cleanest always. So there's some extra work there in staffing.
Let's just rent outside, fields and stadium.
Big garbage can.
But that's, that's really all unless there's more questions. But I'll be here if any come up.
Yeah, and so our revised timeline at this point is intent would be to press to have those preliminary projections next Thursday. And knowing that that's not going to be perfect numbers, of course, and we'll come back with more refined numbers in April. And even when we give you those numbers in mid-April, it's remembering that they're projections based on a lot of assumptions. So, but we have to have some numbers that we use for staffing. And so at this point, that's what we're seeking to have these ready for so we can make good staffing decisions that align with our budget capacity. So, so really thankful for the support they're giving in that. With that, we had a Budget Advisory Committee meeting scheduled for this Monday. We'll be rescheduling that because the intent of that next meeting is to use those projections to help us start to get some feedback. And so there'll be a few meetings that will move just on that. But in the end, we'll make sure that all these things happen in the right order, so.
Okay, so a quick question about the Budget Committee.
Yeah.
I've just heard some feedback from the community about how that was advertised or maybe lack thereof. So could you just give like a brief overview of how that was put out to get more community involvement? Whether it was the staff here or the community?
What, it wasn't put out necessarily for requests to get community involved. What we did was we tried to seek and identify representatives from different groups in order to have from, have a community participants and have staff participants from different groups have cross-representation. So the intent was it was, it was done through invitation.
Okay, so you never really put out kind of a broad net, you just.
Just, no, we didn't just put out a looking for people to participate in Budget Advisory Committee. That was really done through, done through invitation to try to. But we did ask our principals to help us with identifying for who would be people who could come forward for community. And then sought, and then asked through our, through our principal team, who was interested in being, participating from that group, asking our associations and groups to, who would they have as participants? So it was asking out to each group to identify someone and then having our principals help us with identifying interested parent members, so. Any other questions?
The topic, the next one?
Yeah, so, so the next one, I'm going to shift up another, a different PowerPoint so you can see that. Oops, and it is. Later, we don't, maybe we'll, maybe we'll just close that Zoom so that doesn't keep bringing that pop up. I'm going to hand out to you now document with guiding principles for budget decisions. You've got it in the packet, all right, perfect, wonderful. Then I'll just give, make sure each of you have that. And so, so this document that you have in front of you has gone through, and I think they, do I have the clicker here, is it, oh, it's over here, has gone through a process where we built a draft based upon some feedback from discussions with DLT members. And then this has gone through feedback from district leadership team, from our particle group, from the Budget Advisory Committee, and now is coming to you. And the intent is to have your feedback on it as well. And what this is, it's a document to help us say, what are some of those guiding principles we use to make budget decisions? Some of the things that we would ask as lenses for this group to keep, for groups to keep in mind as we go through this decision-making process. And so you see the introduction at the top really saying that what we know is that decisions about how to prioritize funds within a limited budget are incredibly complex. There's a whole lot of factors we're going to have to take into consideration. The community budget survey that you'll see tonight will provide some feedback as well. As we prepare to make decisions on that, we're going to seek to align those decisions as much as possible with a set of principles. Those principles, the first part of that on there is that we have a set of strategic priorities, those strategic pillars. And each of those is something we've committed as an area of focus in the district. And, and we have strategies aligned with those. So instruct, our instructional excellence, of course, you'll see tied to Policy 2005, which is around our school improvement plans. You heard a school improvement plan presented tonight by East Olympia Elementary. And of course, our goal is to continue to support those school improvement planning processes as much as possible. And of course, our goal is to continue to support those school improvement planning processes as much as possible aligned with district goals. And so, so that is the first. Our multi-tiered, our systems of support model, which we've been working on through multi-tiered systems of support. You see that tied to policy twenty-one oh eight intervention programs. I would say there's multiple policies you could tie that to. And certainly the most recent bill that was passed around comprehensive counseling is another area of support for this, this pillar. But really, our intent is within our financial capacity. Of course, we're going to provide programs that meet the needs of our educationally disadvantaged students. Kids who need additional help, making sure that we have the interventions in place to provide that support. Our educational equity pillar, of course, policy thirty-two twelve, which we've spent quite, we've spent quite a bit of time on saying that we are going to differentiate our resource allocation to meet the needs of students who need more supports and opportunities to succeed academically. These are parts of, these are, from that policy, it says that's going to be one of the areas of focuses is around educational equity. And I, I think the fiscal responsibility pillar is somewhat self-explanatory of what I've tied in there in that we discussed is that the minimum fund balance really is the most critical tie-in there. And that's that we're going to make sure that we may present a general fund budget with a commitment to a four percent of the district's budgeted expenditures toward a minimum fund balance. And that has to be, that has to be a part of that budgeting process. So any questions just related to those pillars? First off, I think those are, are something we spent some time on, but wanted to make sure that, that reiterate that that would be a part of our decision-making lens. Below that, you'll see, I mean, the, the next one is all, is, is pretty clear. Decisions have to comply with laws and regulations covering, governing schools. And we have collective bargaining agreements with our associations that once we've committed to, we're committed to either follow or go back and renegotiate, of course. And in certain situations, there may be opportunities for us to sit down with associations and talk about in, in light of the budget situation, are there ways we can work together toward that? But we have to, in the end, whatever that agreement is, we have to follow. We don't get to the unilaterally make decisions not to follow agreements, of course. So, so that is something we have to take into consideration anytime we build a budget. Questions about that? Cause that's a. Okay. Yeah.
Are we, are we just asking questions about the latter part? Are we asking questions now about everything?
At this stage, what I'll do is I'll, why don't we go through the, the, so you've just seen what's on here. And one of the things I want to hear from you is if there's any of these that you feel like you have concerns about, feel like there's revisions that you would recommend in any way? Or if there's anything that you feel like is missing that would be important to include in that, if that makes sense. So. So if, if you have a question, I guess if you have a question about any of them I've gone through so far, happy to answer that. If you, if it's a more general question, maybe we go through the rest and.
Well, just for my own knowledge, in case anybody else doesn't know, the last, I guess it's not a bullet point, but your last under decisions right here, the last one. It's not a bullet point, just. Decisions consider impact on program-based funding sources. Decision makers will consider whether a reduction would also result in a loss of conditional funding that may outweigh the benefit of the reduction. Can you just give some examples of what those program-based funding sources are? And also, I see decision makers a lot in this, in this document and beside yourself, who are, who are the other decision makers?
Yeah. So let's, so let's hold that question for a moment. And why don't I go down through each of these? Because I think the intent is, I, I want to take those in each bullet point. And so. So you're right, we'll, we'll come to that larger discussion. So the, the first one below that, below where we were was decisions considering our ability to create break even programs. And so I'm not jumping around. Maybe we'll just come down through those and then get to, I want to hold that question for when we get there. As far as considering our ability to create break even programs, one of the things that we, we want to look at is, if I can pull through here. So considering the ways to adjust programs so they operate within the funding generated by the enrollment in that program is beneficial to us. We have some programs that, that, that are helpful. But if they're operating at a loss, then we have to ask that question about, can we restructure them? Whether it's a, whether it's TVA or whether it's preschool programs or whether it's a variety of different programs we might operate. When we talk about that, we, we get funding for those programs perhaps by, generated by the students who enrolled. If the program cost is substantially higher, one of the things we can, we have to discuss is, okay, do we lose that program or can we restructure that program so it operates within the funding it receives? And in, in many cases, we try to, the first thing is we want to try to make it operate within the funding it receives. So we know it's serving kids in a way that, that the people choosing that program want to keep it. So that's one of the considerations in here. The next is considering the impact on district enrollment. Of course, we want to consider whether those reductions would also result in a substantial loss in enrollment. So we might decide that, that we, we make a decision on a program. Let's, 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 we, we pick on TVA because we've, that one's been a topic of discussion. So if we, let's say closed a program like TVA, we have two hundred and fifty students in that program and there's other districts around us offering similar programs. So those students might go to those programs. We then lose the funding that comes with each of those students to that other district. So then you have to make, so if that program was losing money, then that would be one thing. But if we're able to make it a break even program, that's not something you want to do. Because then you lose the staff that go with it, you lose the services to the students. And so for us, having that opportunity to consider, can we make it break even? What's the impact on enrollment loss if we were to lose the program? What we don't want to create is a spiral where we close programs, lay off more staff, lose more money, close more programs. And so, so that is an important consideration. Considering our, the impact on community support is another key issue. Is that we have to consider whether reductions would substantially reduce community support for the district. So that's another piece of this complex calculation. There are programs, for example, we pass a levy. And we tell our community when we're promoting that levy, that this pays for extracurricular programs and activities. If we were then take those activities away, then that, then the community might have a legitimate question about, well, why did we support that levy then? And so we have to consider all of those, those things as we make decisions around it is what is the best mix to, to reduce this that maintains the community support? And that we're being upfront with them about honoring commitments we've made. And also at the same time, making decisions that are in the best interest of students. So there's certainly a balance there. And, and none of these sit independently, I should say. As you have a discussion about them, often these intersect when we're looking at an issue. So it does come to a series of, of tough discussions that we'll have to have. And then finally, that program-based funding sources. And thank you for the question, Lori, is what kind of program-based funding sources are there? So for example, one of those is our kindergarten to third grade class size ratios. So if we, if we increase class size beyond a certain ratio, we reach a point where we're no longer able to capture funding that the state gives us, enhance funding for smaller class sizes in those grade levels. Now, that's a class size average across the district. It doesn't mean classroom to classroom. So I might have, if, if I look at a first grade classroom at Michael T, that classroom might be above that ratio. But when we look across our district and at the staff serving those students in first grade, if it falls below that staff to student ratio, we're able to get, capture that funding. If we go above that ratio, we start losing funds. And so we have to consider, are we losing the benefit of additional funding by making a decision to, to reduce in a certain area? And there are others, grant-funded programs. If we, if, if we, for example, don't use our LAP funds for their intended purpose, the state can reclaim that funding or title funding, other things that are specific purpose funding. And we have a number of funds that are for specific purposes, whether that's for professional development, whether that's for, and, and so what that, where that's difficult is someone outside looking at it may say, well, just don't do that. If you just, you know, why would we do, spend money on professional development? Let's say right now, if we're in this tight situation, we might be able to save a staff member. But that might be coming from a dedicated funding source for that purpose, where if we don't use it for that purpose, we lose that funding. And so, so this is a complex mix as we make those decisions. We have a lot of siloed funding sources that have particular use requirements. So the decision makers question on that. Ultimately, the board will end up making, will approve the budget, but that, those budget decisions lie in the hands of, in, are, are made through a number of things. So our budget advisory committee is going to provide feedback and advising. And our district leadership team will be involved in making most of those decisions, ultimately with the feedback from that budget advisory committee. And considering, and the discussions we're having with our principals, so human resources and the finance department. We're all involved in staffing discussions at our schools to figure out how do we staff our schools in a way that, that aligns with the feedback we're getting from our community, from our budget advisory committee, from our principals. And, and then identifies the right staffing levels to try and meet those things. Now, when we get into some of the programs, we'll have that budget advisory committee giving us feedback. They are, it is advisory. And it has to be in that case, I believe, because it is possible they give us advising that as we look at these principles in a certain situation, we may not be able to perfectly follow. But our goal is going to be to try to listen to that feedback and really honor that feedback from our principals, from budget advisory committee, from, we can't make everyone happy on that, of course. I mean, we're hearing, I'm getting feedback from a lot of people saying, protect this program, protect that program. And I, I value all of that. What it means is our families love and care about the programs that we have across the district right now. And no cut is easy. Ultimately, in the end, we're going to have to weigh which of those cuts will have, or which of those reductions will have the least negative impact. And we'll do that through synthesizing the feedback of a lot of people. And ultimately, our district leadership team will be involved in a lot of those decisions. And, and frankly, if it comes down to something where I have to, I'll make the call on it. But my intent is to, to really try and do that as much as possible through a collaborative process. And then we'll bring you a budget that reflects the best thinking based upon all of that. So, so from there, I guess what I'd ask is, as you look at those guiding principles, do you see any lenses that are missing that would be important for us to add? Do you have any other feedback in terms of anything there that you feel like this is, this is not aligned in a way that would support effective decision-making?
So I have a few comments on the educational equity pillar and component of this.
Sure.
I want to go ahead and accelerate this to the, the very top in terms of, you know, one, one of the things unfortunately that just given the, everything else going on that we've really fallen behind on is looking at data. And so with respect to this, I would say that that's actually the, the number one, kind of as you go through an entire process of thinking about each of these different things. And you get to the very end, what I would like to see included as part of that, applying that particular lens are the, you know, questions that are asked when you use like, for example, a racial equity tool. Which is, okay, so we've come to this recommendation or this decision. And who is it going to harm? You know, who is this potentially going to benefit? You know, what is going to be the impact? And it would be good to see that actually specifically related to student demographics and characteristics. So rather than just kind of a general thinking about who, you know, this is potentially going to harm. But actually looking at, could we think about it in terms of race and ethnicity, low income status, you know, each of those things? So that's really the only addition that I could think of was being a bit more specific around applying that equity lens to the recommendations that are going to come through.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Feedback on. I just had a, Sean, is this available for the community in any way to see or view?
Yeah, we, we can post it to the website. Cause we do for like, well, much like we do for policy feedback and other things, this could be something that could be posted up to collect.
It reads a little policy-like. Policy and then kind of our pillars, like you said, but yeah, if I could maybe have this available to you.
Sure.
That'd be great. But otherwise, I think it looks, it spells it out pretty clear. I don't know if it's perfect, but it seems to be a good start.
How long do we have to make feedback or give you comment around it? Is it just, is this it tonight? Or do we have some more time if we have, if we go home and look at it and say, you know what? I gave some more thought to this. Let me just throw it out there.
Certainly we could continue to collect that. We're going to start, I, I guess it was, until we start making decisions and applying it. We, it's really, this is a working tool. The intent is for it to help lead us to good decision-making. And so I wouldn't say this is the last time you have that, but it's, it will be, we'll be working with this in its best state as we make, as we go through that.
And I would think we would always make this even better kind of living document. Feedback, I guess, would always be welcome. But I guess if it's timely for this cycle, you, you kind of have that awareness on the time.
And I just want to thank you, President Taylor, for your comment just before that about making it more available to the community. Cause I was thinking along those very same lines.
Well, I think it expels out some of the decision, or at least they can understand how decisions are being made. They still, still, lots of people may not agree with them and that's okay. But this at least gives some insight into it instead of just, you know, maybe throwing darts or holding something on the wall.
I think, I, I, I think this is great. You know, that's what is gonna, is gonna be tough. But I, I look at this as what staffer, this is what I said at the budget committee meeting on Monday. This is what staff is going to apply. I love Darby's ad about telling us, you know, when you are, you know, making the decisions, who's impacting. I love, I love having that information when we make the decision, but it's up to staff to use these. And, you know, so if we have any other guidance to staff, if they have followed this and I, my expectation then is to get decisions based on this, I'm going to trust staff to do that. So that's, I'm sorry if that my phone keeps buzzing. But, um, so I'm, I'm excited because usually when we get a budget, we're not making cuts. But we get a budget, we don't exactly know how the decisions were made. So this is, this is really helpful. But what I told the budget committee is that the board should not be applying these, should not be applying these. We do not have the educational expertise in which to apply these lenses. But we do hire people to do that. So I'm looking at the Shans, I'm looking at Jennifer. And anyone else that will be doing this, it's going to be a tough job. And so whatever you come up with, we will know that a lot of thought went into it. So I appreciate that.
Any other feedback?
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Dotson. We can move on to the next topic, budget survey results.
Yes. And so intent of this one is to give you guys a look at the feedback from our community that, that we will be sharing with budget advisory committee at our next meeting with them. And with our district leadership team, I showed it to them today. So we are all thinking in terms of that feedback as we go into these processes. So there's the right PowerPoint. And I'll go ahead and give you a copy of those so you can see it. This is also something as I'm thinking about posting information back to, to the community, here's another opportunity to post that up. And so we've just gotten this prepared here today in this format. So.
So helpful, Scott.
Them there.
I would just be careful with that, with the survey results. You know, I have great concerns about this survey and there should be some caveats listed.
I think you'll address some of those. You still have concerns though.
Yeah. So, so let's talk about that. So what we had as far as participation in this survey. When we got done, we had a thousand seventeen participants in this survey. The relationship to Tomater School District, as you can see, a person could choose more than one of these. You know, some of us are, are, are staff members, but might also be parents in the district or, but, but so people self-selected those categories. What you see, I did see some that had multiple, some people might've just chosen, I'm a community member, not a parent, not a staff member. But we had, we did have some student participation in it. Always would love to see more student participation in those. But you see, we had pretty robust parent and staff participation. But you see, we had pretty robust parent and staff participation in this survey. When we look at it by school, the participation, at the secondary level, it almost tracks by school size perfectly. So you'll see Tumwater High School had the highest number, followed closely by Black Hills High School. Tumwater Middle School, interesting, had a little more participation than Bush Middle School by size, but, but fairly close at our middle schools. Then when we get to our elementaries, we had the highest participation at Michael T Simmons, which given what we saw in terms of the interest around the highly capable program, it's not surprising that I think that was in a, a school where there was a high degree of interest in this survey. But then you see, you, you can kind of see how it tracks down by, by school. So the first question was looking at this set of investments. Rank your top five priorities, one through five. So these are saying, family saying, what is, what is it they think we should preserve the most? Or, or that what they would say is their top five priorities for funding. And what you'll see as you look at that is the highest, the most people chose as their number one, elementary teaching staff. Behind that, the next highest in that, people choosing in that one through five, was it middle school, high school teaching staff? So the core teaching staff in those areas was the, the first and second priority. Shortly behind that was counseling and mental health supports. Right, so, so really, those are, those out of all of those selections were the, the highest priorities. And then you see, I mean, there's some others that fall in tiers behind that. But you can, you can see how that rated out. Any questions or feedback there based on what you see? And I think that's a. So if we went to the next question, it was, we said, okay, now this is a little harder. No, and, and this came really, we took this question directly from an exercise that was used at our facilities advisory committee where we had to say, not only what are the, our top priorities, which is often somewhat easy, but also when you take a set of things that all feel important to you, and you have to say, what would I put as my lowest priorities in that? That's a hard exercise because there is nothing here that someone would say, I don't care. I mean, I mean, ma- for many people, there's, there's, there are a few options here that they'd see, say are unimportant. But when you look at that, what you see is the one that ranked with the most people putting it at their lowest was remote learning options. I think you're going to see something interesting when you get to comments ahead. And that is this, when you see these, the, these items that rank lowest, we have some items that, that are programs that serve a particular population. So those who aren't a part of that population may consider those to be an item that they would rank as easier for us to look at as a low priority. What you'll see in the comments is for the people who are served in those populations, they're very passionate about those programs and care deeply about them. So, so the, the next lowest is you'll see several that were pretty close here. Athletic and activities programs, grounds and maintenance, and highly capable and self-contained program are items that were all by the general population ranked as the, as the ones that were rated in that lowest tier. And then behind that, you'll see some, see the other areas that were, that didn't have as many people choosing them into their lowest priorities. So if we go to comments, I've, I've done this a couple of ways for you. The first thing, we did a word cloud on it just because many people use one-word answers on this. And, and there were some phrases, so when you get to phrases, we have to go a little deeper and we'll do that in a moment. But when you look at this, just what do people say? What do you value most about our school system? The largest words here are the ones that were used the most in those answers. So of course, our staff, our students, and, and, and there's a lot of things that are going to be around students on that. Support being one of those keywords, the, the support and the district quality of education that's provided. You'll see some of those larger words in places being around community. And if I go a little, if I make that a little smaller and then to give you some of the most used phrases that came out of that, now you've got a, you know, a whole lot of comments in there and they, they'll go into a lot of different areas. But the most frequent comments really came in these themes. People like the small community feel of the district, quality teachers, support staff, administration, high-quality education that their students receive in the district, feeling as having safe schools, staff who care, extracurricular activities, those student supports, equity, which is an interesting, because you'll see people that say, we have to do better. There's also a lot of people who feel like that's an area of strength. And so that's, you know, there's a frequent comment around that, that there's, and, and that may depend on who you talk to and how they define that. And whole child teaching, I should say, people say they like this. It's, it's worded in different ways, ways. So you won't see certain things here that you'll see in a phrase. If you go back to the, just the word diagram, because people will word it differently. But they'll say, I like that your whole child focus, social emotional learning, not just focused on certain topics, but that, that was a frequent comment. If we go to what, what people want us to preserve, it will be somewhat tied to that. The largest word there is teachers, and the second largest is staff, right? You see some other words that pop out in that word cloud, support. You'll see class and sizes go together quite often in that word cloud. The arts and music pop as, as larger words in that. Health is a large word in that. And to give you some phrases that go with that that help explain that a little further, that people said, quality teachers and support staff maintain that as much as possible. There were a lot of comments around, if we have to focus, what do we preserve? It's preserve a focus on those core subjects. There were a lot of comments in that area. Safe and caring learning environments, figuring out how to maintain that. Student activities, so you saw earlier, that was one of them in that lowest tier. But those who participate, this is where I will say, in some of those, even though they may have rated the lowest by the group, for those who participate in them, they're very vocal about the importance of those programs. And so student activities, arts, music and performing arts, highly capable program, TVA and virtual learning options. Those who are participating, those are saying, please protect that. And they're, they're pretty vocal that that's something that's important to them. And so we see a lot of comments about that in there. Counseling and mental health support is one of the most frequent. It was high, it was, it was high in that. And support for our most vulnerable learners is a comment that's frequently found in that, in those results. So those are some of the, the, the key things that people are asking us to seek to preserve. When we got to the efficiencies question, and, and, and this is the one that, what I would say is there were about, about 600 comments on that. And in support of, I know the concern you expressed before, Lori, there were some people who said, I'm confused by this question. I'm not sure on it. And we thought about whether we reworded, but it was after it was already out and was collecting responses. And, and since most of the responses were on, were on target, we decided to go ahead and, and let that question go forward and see what we got. And we did get quite a lot of feedback on it. That was what we, I can tell you the common comments that came into that is people said, look at district office and administrative reductions first. And, and that really comes from that value of trying to be as far from students as possible, right? And so saying, look, look in those areas first. I can tell you that when we've made previous reductions has been one of the first areas that we've looked, and we continue to look in that area. That is why we run actually a, a little leaner operation administratively than a lot of districts our size, because some of those cuts were made a few years ago. And of course, we're looking again, as we look at that, to say, what are the first, what are the things we can do while maintaining the critical operations administratively that would, that, that our district needs? So reducing overstaffing, that's a general, I mean, and, and that, those comments had a variety of different kind of ways of doing that, whether that is, whether that is looking at general classroom, class sizes, looking at split classes in certain situations, looking at certain smaller electives. I mean, the people might have offered, but in general, they're just saying, look for overstaffing. Focus on funding the core subjects. There's comments around reducing salaries or limiting increases to employees. Reducing athletic costs. Now, this is in athletics, you see again, comments that were around saying, hey, we seek to reduce athletic costs where you can. There were also a lot of comments saying, mate, whatever you do, maintain athletics, don't, don't harm that. There were some saying, maybe we can pass on costs in other ways, fundraising. What are other ways we can get to that so that, so that that's not taking resources that could be going to the classroom? There were some comments about restructuring or closing TVA. What can be done to make that program more efficient? Limiting curriculum orders and looking at reducing, saying, what can we do about consumables? I mean, when people say, you know, consumable, that we might send home consumable workbooks in a certain class or other things. Are there ways we can reduce that? Materials that are one-time use and as a way of saving costs? There were a number of them saying, think about equity across your buildings and levels. Make sure that you're not impacting one level at the expense of another, so that there should be some balance across that. Some people thought a four-day school week was, and, and actually, it was enough of those that it was worthy of putting on here. And, and then while that's, certainly, Washington has started to experiment with that. It's really not something that's out there and wide use as an option for us. But, but it's a creative, it's a creative thinking for solutions. Utilizing volunteers was frequently something some people said. And maybe that comes with, through the pandemic, we've had less of that. And we're starting to open that door again to volunteers more. But they're saying, hey, you know, volunteers can help you in areas where we may need additional adult support. How can we, how can we reduce those things, fees and, or those costs associated with testing? The impacts of testing and delay, and holding off technology purchases and delaying facilities projects, I would share, were both on there. And I'm recognizing, we're recognizing that there's some communication we can really do around that because those, we have for the most part stopped doing those things in those areas that would come off of our general fund. What we're trying to do in those areas is the work people would be seeing in terms of computer replacement or other projects are coming out of capital facilities funds that are dedicated for that purpose and can't be used to GoFund staff. But I, I, I completely recognize when people see that, they'll go, well, gosh, maybe if you stop that expense, it would allow you to have more on the other side. So there's some communication we can do that can help on that. There were a few other themes that showed up, and I just want to call, put them on there while they, they, they aren't quite as directly in this. But certainly, there's people who continued, felt like this was a place they wanted to express that we need to keep working on improving transportation safety and consistency. And we're discussing, you know, how do we make sure we have funding in the budget to make sure we have enough bus drivers to move buses if we can get those bus drivers? Because we don't want to be sending kids to school or home two hours late. That's not our interest or, and, or an hour late, you know, when we don't have enough drivers. Masks remain a topic of interest, and we get feedback on that. And just, a- anytime we have that open-ended opportunity for discussion. Concerns about bullying equity issues expressed, saying as we make reductions, we don't want to interfere with addressing those issues. So making sure that we maintain the support that's necessary to take care of those issues when they occur. Lot around preserving mental health supports and services. And then people were saying, you know, what can we do to raise revenues or raise funds so that we don't have to do as much on the cutting side? And that is something that I can say, all of this feedback is useful to us. I mean, we're, some of it are things we're thinking about. We're already saying, what are ways we increase revenues? And, you know, while, while the bake sale isn't going to get us, they're certainly looking at other grant opportunities, looking at what are those opportunities for us to increase funding? I mean, the, the, the creative work that, or the work that was done, I wouldn't say it's, it's creative. It's just the, the hard work that was done by our special services team to go through and make sure we were applying for all of the safety net funds that we may be able to, to, to bring, to capture through qualifying services. That's a way of raising revenue that doesn't cost us staff. It helps us get, it helps us pay for staff that are doing work that, that, that the state should be funding. So we're looking for all of those opportunities. So all of this was really, I think, useful feedback. We'll bring that to our budget advisory committee. We'll also then have them have an opportunity to start taking that and saying, all right, what does that lead to in terms of some recommendations or ideas that, that they may be able to give us back to help us think about decisions going forward? So that's the feedback that we have from that budget, community budget survey. And I guess, you know, what questions or thoughts does this information bring for you?
I had a question, Sean. It was on the efficiencies, the superintendent considered the first one, think about equity across buildings and levels. Is that like staffing levels or is that grade levels? Is that program levels or is that all those or?
Yeah, I think that across buildings and levels, there, there is sometimes a sense that, for example, at Black Hills, remember a couple of years ago when we had, we made some reductions because the ratios at Black Hills were higher than at Tumwater High School that year? So we made some reductions. And there was a concern among some parents and at that time that they felt like, okay, if you're making those cuts here, are, are we getting treated differently than Tumwater High School? And the next year, we made some cuts at Tumwater High School. But, but there is that, that always that question of equity. Are, are we looking at staffing equitably across buildings? Across levels, there were comments saying, you know, sometimes when we take these cuts, it seems to hit the elementary the most. Let's, you know, let's be thoughtful about being equitable across elementary, middle, high school in terms of making cuts in a way that's not disproportionately impacting one level.
Thank you, Sean.
I, I think it's interesting. I don't, I don't think that our community knows the different sizes of our schools and the fact that, that our high schools might be staffed in the same way, which means Black Hills is getting a richer funding, or getting a richer staffing model than Tumwater High School. But every time we try to make that a bit more equitable or match the enrollment, it looks like we're ta- taking away from Black Hills or, you know, and giving it to Tumwater High School. So it's just interesting, you know, how would we communicate? You know, how do we make sure that our staff understand what, what this is? And in terms of equity, it doesn't always look fair, but at some point, we can't be equal because we're not, that means we're not being fair.
And equity between our high schools is, is, you're, you're right, a complex area for us to think about. Because what we want to offer as much as possible is equitable, or equitable programs between our two high schools. When you're running, when you're two very different sized high schools, that, 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 that can be challenging. Because when you have more students, it might mean that a, it's easier to get enough students to run a particular AP program, for example. When you have a smaller population, that number might come in smaller. And so we have to have those discussions in staffing to say, how do we balance providing equitable programs while also staffing efficiently?
I think this, that, this is, this is helpful. The other thing I wanted to make a comment on, I served on a budget committee a long, long, long time ago and kind of before she even started going to school. And it's interesting, you know, the concerns you raised about people filling this out multiple times. At that time, the, anyone was welcome to come, and that committee was stacked with a certain population of parents. And so it's just, it's just interesting and it, it can happen in, in different ways and different places. Because when people are advocating for something, they find the ways in which to advocate. So I can appreciate, I can appreciate, I can appreciate your concerns about this, Lori, and can appreciate the way in which you structured the budget committee. Because it was really frustrating that so many parents from a particular group got a voice, got the ear of the budget person at that time. And it was really frustrating, I wasn't part of that group because my kid wasn't going here. So it, it's just, just interesting and all the things. But I, I appreciate these results. Can't say I'm surprised, but it's always good to be, for the, for, for our beliefs to be confirmed by, by people who took the survey.
Any other questions or feedback?
I think one of the worst things we can do is assume that our community, our schools, our staff, our students understand what buckets of money can be spent where. And a mantra that always goes through my head, because it is pounded into my head at work, is seven times seven ways. I'm lucky if I get five times five ways. But when you communicate, it's seven times seven different ways to all your target areas. And that is, it's very difficult, but it needs to be done. And it can't just be, I'm going to, I'm going to send this out one time about how capital projects are coming out of this bucket. And that's it, well, I check box. But then it's four or five more times in four or five different ways that is communicated about what that money is used for. Technology, I mean, that is a big one. Why are we buying so many TVs? Well, because that's in the technology budget. And sometimes you either spend it or you lose it, and the community doesn't understand that. Why are we buying so many new computers? Last year's were fine. Again, they don't understand where the, what buckets can be used where. We could have saved that teacher's job. We could have kept that counselor. Why are we buying more computers? I just, it's early, it's often, it's frequent, and it's many different ways as possible. And hopefully even then, you're still not going to reach everyone, but more times, more ears, more eyes, better understanding.
So I'll, uh, I'll just reiterate, I guess, one last point in terms of the, the guiding principles and, and the budget committee. So I've unfortunately been on several budget committees because I've worked for the state for 15 years. And there were two recessions during that, that point in time. And so the concept of when you are faced with just not having the resources that you need, you have to have some sort of an anchor. You have to have something that you use to evaluate all of these different things. And kind of to your point, Scott, um, just understanding how all of it works together. So this is a, I mean, the survey is interesting. It's a good piece of information. But I just cannot stress enough how important those guiding principles are. Because it is what you will use to anchor things like that's on this list. Well, why can't we do a four-day school week? Okay. Well, let's evaluate that within the context of our guiding principles. Where does this align up with law, contracts, you know, and who is at harm? And I think, I hope, what you'll find is as you're working through that, you know, with the budget committee, then that will eventually get to a place of, okay, it's aligned with our, our goals and our priorities. And I absolutely agree with Scott that the more transparent this entire process can be, the more it gets communicated, these documents, if they can be posted on the website or shared out. Cause there's also a lot of, seems like there's a lot of confusion or, you know, gaps in, in understanding. And to your point, you're not going to catch everyone, even if you do it five times. So that would be, that would be very helpful to have lots and lots of communication.
Any other comments, questions?
I just wanted to say one last time that I did have very serious concerns about this survey. And to me, it's just a snapshot. It just represents that moment in time. And folks get to express their opinion. But the one thing I am a little bit disappointed about is that we don't have our student representatives here today to kind of weigh in on this as well. It would have been nice to hear some of their feedback, maybe in the future that can be a little bit more incorporated.
Talia Clapa actually serves on the budget advisory committee. So the, good news is she's there, but yes, thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about inviting them to the work sessions and, and they're invited, they're invited. So. And what, whether we require it or not is, I guess, I guess the question. If we want, want to require that as a condition of their ser- service.
Yeah, we should probably look at that because it's, it matters for this for sure. Like Lori said, we'd like to hear that, but there might be work sessions where, you know, they, they hate waste their nights anymore. And they could still learn something, but at the same time value their time. So they do feel participating, but I think we look at, I would, we should probably look at more extending them to the work sessions, especially when the topics are appropriate for that, for sure.
This all relates to our students.
That's right. That's why we're here. Exactly. Thank you, Lori. Director Sales.
Okay. Thank you, President Taylor.
Anything else? So if there's no.
I'm really going to be bad at that next year. I'm going to have to put like little name tags on the table. So I know who's sitting. When I get in panic mode, I forget even my wife's name.
Without any further business, in front of the board, this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thank you, Jennifer, for your great.